Okay. Welcome, good evening. Monday, fifteenth of June, 2015. Planning Commission is hereby called to order. Ms. G. One minute, please. Sorry, I forgot to look for the hi sign. I don't think.
Mr. John?
Present.
Here.
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 Here. I know we're not expecting Melissa. Are we theoretically expecting Ruth? Or do you, no, no, fine.
I know Melissa's going to be here.
Okay. Outstanding. A motion to adopt the agenda.
I so move.
Second it.
Motion to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. Receipt of petitions either from planning commissioners or members of the public. For those items not on the agenda. Wait a minute. It is not on the agenda. Mr. David Oliver.
Good evening. My name is David Oliver and I am here as part of the ownership group at 207 Park Avenue. I wanted to come speak to you tonight very briefly just to call your attention to a letter that I had written to you that should be part of the package that you have for tonight's work session. And my, the letter is about and it expresses my concern for what is going to happen to the parking situation between, on that 200 block of Park Avenue. I believe that there's a very high potential for parking, for people to be parking in, on properties that need all the parking that they've got, particularly ours. We're right next door to the application property. We use 100% of our parking and have for years. It's a very tight situation. I've worked in that building or owned part of that building for over 30 years and have a good idea of what it takes for that building to work properly. One of my concerns specifically with the application, the way it looks today, is that there doesn't seem to be any definition of what the necessary parking is. I understand that the ordinance provides flexibility so that, so that being the historic renovation, you can kind of set parking wherever you want to set it. But there's still the issue of what's going to be necessary and where is it going to be? Where are these people going to park? From my looking at the drawings, I would estimate that there could be anywhere from 40, maybe 45 required parking spots for this building. That's a lot of spaces. If this becomes a successful operation, which we all hope it does, then I'm wondering where those people are going to go. Mr. Snyder, in the last work session, made reference to parking at the 12 spaces across the street from the project, across Maple. Parking spaces available in the hospital garage and other parking moreover down by Dogwood, the Dogwood Restaurant. And when I passed those, as I did tonight, as I did at the last work session, those are all occupied. Now, I don't know what's going on inside the parking structure, although the signs pretty much say that's weekend only, which leaves a hole during the week. I want to find a way to support this application. Like I say, I've been on this, adjacent to this piece of property forever and I would love to see something nice happen to it. And I really believe that what Mr. Norm Miles proposing is just a huge improvement, a real, a real nice thing for the whole block, for the whole city, really. But I would like to see some effort made to define exactly what he expects to happen in terms of what parking will be necessary for his operation and where that parking, where that vacant parking exists. And with that, you know, if he can find that, hey, I'll get on board immediately. Hopefully, we can put some kind of a concise analysis together, some kind of a parking study that identifies both of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did receive that letter in our packet.
I found it. Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Petitions? Great. Number five, old business? None? New business? None? Other business? None? Gozer, the Gozerian. Enter. Okay. Approval of minutes, and this takes us back to 18 May. Did you get Ruth's changes?
Yes, I did. But I have not heard from her.
Well, is what we have with her changes?
Yes.
So we have the revised version of this. Okay, fine. Okay. Motion to approve the 18th of May, 2015 minutes.
I so move with the corrections.
With the corrections.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Abstained. I wasn't hit on the 18th.
Motion to approve the 1st of June, 2015 minutes.
I so move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Planning Commission reports.
I do have a couple. The Housing Commission did have sponsor a meeting with the Broad Falls tenants and it was over at St. James in their meeting room, which was very convenient since it was right across the street from the apartment building. And it was about 30 some people attended and since it's just a little over 100 apartments in that building, so that was a pretty good turnout. The main concerns were, and the management was there also, main concerns were plumbing, which is really falling in disrepair and a lot of leakage, security, and then also major communication problems. So those were all listed and we are going to be following up on it. I thought it was a very positive meeting and so the Housing Commission will also be having another meeting. We'll be discussing it this next week on the 17th. And then, of course, the Visioning School, George Mason School Visioning Meeting was very well attended. A lot of people, a lot of good ideas. It seemed like everybody was very anxious to get going and it seemed overall extremely positive, but a big, big turnout. So that information will go out as soon as they get it compiled and.
Would you describe the tenor and tone of the meeting as mostly interested in the school, the school and the 10 acres, or?
The school.
Fine.
Except that, you know, some people were wondering what types of businesses to the fact that they were getting down to the, they don't want a loan company there and they don't want a 7-Eleven there. You know, so they were getting too much into the.
Vapors, all the rage.
Details. But they were all very interested in seeing something, you know, the biggest thing was a high-tech company of some kind that would have the, I think a lot of people saw the real positive aspect of having somebody that we could partner with for educational purposes, which would be the most, you know, interesting thing as far as certain areas.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, great.
But it was very interesting.
Okay. Lastly, Planning Directors' report.
We have a number of scheduled items for the Planning Commission. We're anticipating the sixth revised submission of the Mason Row package on June 19th and the following Monday, we have a tentatively scheduled work session, joint work session for the Planning Commission.
Okay, let me stop you right there. So when will you know that we're meeting on June 22nd? Because if it's coming in the 19th, I don't think we're meeting the 22nd.
Well, which is why.
Let's say that it arrives on the 19th at 4:45 PM. I don't think.
No staff?
How's that going to work?
We will not be able to route or distribute that package until the next week and the staff has to actually review the package to make sure the application is complete. So we've actually indicated to the applicant that they have to submit a couple of days prior to that date. We're just using the date they gave us as a submission date, but it's possible that it could come in a couple of days prior to that date.
Okay, so let's do this. If we haven't heard from you on Wednesday by noonish, 1:00, 1:30. If we haven't heard from you Wednesday at 1:30, we're not coming. How about that?
Duly noted.
Okay. Okay, great.
But the notice still has to be filed, right? I mean.
Well, I, I love these joint work sessions.
I know you do.
But this, I think you're getting this late in the afternoon on the 19th and we're not going to have it. Does that?
It's fair to assume, yes.
Okay, so, all right.
So if we get the submission on time, we have a tentative work session, joint work session with Planning Commission and the City Council to be briefed by the applicant on the revised plans. We also have the bicycle master plan adoption. On July 6th, we have, and this is subject to change, 205 Park Avenue and the 102 Rosemary Lane subdivision approval as well for the Planning Commission. We might have a work session on Mason Row as well on that date. And Friday, July 17th, anticipated submission of key board and commission comments, recommendations, and that will be prepped by staff for a July 20th public hearing by the Planning Commission, and that's the continued meeting.
So, Ms. G, we should talk Wednesday at 1:30, one way or another. Because how else will we know unless it's to the affirmative or the negative? You think we should go until 2:00?
I would be delighted to speak with you.
All right, fine. All right, fine. I'd go to 2:15 on Wednesday. Well, no, that's about where we got to cut this thing off. All right. Motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
I second.
Oh, we missed our.
Moved and seconded. We are adjourned.
We missed it. How are we going to handle this, up here or down there?
No, because we are not, that's the City Council meeting. We have no meeting on the 22nd. And I'm happy to come to a joint work session where we have no meeting afterwards. I actually was not being facetious. I think that's when we should do these, these joint work sessions, when we don't have to get to any place after.
I know, because that's really bad.
But I think we got to know. They got the bike master plan. Okay. Where do you want us? Who's first?
The projector is down again, so we think maybe we should sit here so we can spread out the site plan.
All right. All right, so Ruth is not here. And let me tell you how.
Oh, can we get it in half-size? Half-size is good.
Electronic.
Do we need more? I think we're fine. We are? If you want more? Oh, his item is after the 205 Park Avenue. So it's Anthony's team for. The 205, is that right? Yeah. Yeah, you can sit right by me. So is it? I think so. Yeah, thank you.
Hello? Perfect. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming back tonight to sit down at the work session and talk about the project and where we've gone since we met probably three to four weeks ago. In that interim timeframe, we've gotten comments back from planning staff regarding all sorts of questions after they had circulated through the departments. And our engineers at Walter Phillips have addressed the concerns that were brought up as well as suggestions for the project. We're also prepared to talk a little bit about parking. I know that's one of the concerns on the project, so we're prepared to talk about that tonight. So I'll turn over the microphone to Antonette from Walter Phillips so she can kind of walk you through where we are and then as necessary, I can jump and fill in with any questions that come up.
Thank you. Okay, so the site here, and submitted on the site plan is what the comments that staff provided, that's what they commented on. And so, walking through the site, and this may have been what you saw at the last work session that we had. So the frontage along Park Avenue, we were proposing a five-foot concrete sidewalk with a little four-and-a-half-foot landscape strip behind it, and that meets existing conditions today. And then we are closing an existing curb cut and then also providing, reconstructing the curb cut at the driveway entrance along Park Avenue. We, in terms of storm water management, we are treating with a BNP manufactured structure, that's the one that has the cartridges in it, to treat the water. It's going to treat about .05 acres of the roof area, which is a majority of the roof, and then also treating .05 acres of this yard space. So that will go into the storm filter in the rear and that then gets detained in a stormwater detention box before it outfalls into the public storm sewer system. In terms of landscaping, we are providing landscaping along this buffer. There's some green space back here in the rear of the property and then, again, that four-and-a-half-foot landscape strip behind the public sidewalk. We are requesting waivers for the perimeter parking lot landscaping and that's just due to the existing conditions of the site. The existing drive aisle is shared with the parking spaces for the Kearns Group behind our site. And so, at the edge of our property, obviously, we're not going to be providing landscaping and then the same in the rear here along their property, that's existing parking lot today and their parking lot actually goes all the way back there. So we're not providing any landscaping along that perimeter of our parking lot. And then the perimeter parking lot adjacent to the street is required to be 10 feet and we're asking for a four-and-a-half foot. So those are the waivers that we're requesting. In terms of parking, we are currently showing two bike spaces here in the corner of the site. We are requested to, we are requested to add more, so we are going to add a couple more, which should be a total of six bike parking spaces. That was part of the comments, so that will be addressed in our resubmission. And we are also asked to look at the sidewalk and possibly widening it and providing a brick sidewalk. And so we are also open to that request and that will be submitted. Yes. Yep. And so that will be part of the resubmission as well. Space for one bike. So it's one rack, but there are two spaces, so you could park two bikes there. So like the U bike racks, you can put a bike on each side, so it's only one rack, but you can put one bike on each side. So we're going to add a couple more here on the corner of the property. We thought it'd be most usable in this front space off of the street. And then this is drive aisle and parking space here on this side.
So what's the setback off of Maple? How much space do you have in there?
It is currently shown as a five-foot sidewalk and a four-and-a-half-foot landscape strip.
Well, I thought that was the Park Avenue side.
Oh, I'm sorry. On Maple, well, our property actually ends here and then this part is part of the Kearns Group.
Okay.
And then there's another parcel here before the right-of-way. This is the Kearns Group that belongs, yeah, the architects.
That's strange. But to have a strip of land like that, isn't it?
Yes. We're proposing one accessible space on the site. And so we did take a look at also the parking available in the lot. So here's our site here and this is the public parking lot that has spaces. There are actually 47 available spaces spread throughout the lot and these were the spaces that were all signed and marked. I just went out today and so these are all latest.
And they've re-marked them with the blue because they were really getting faded.
Yeah, these were the ones, so these spots actually looked like they were faded blue lines, so I didn't count them in here, so there could be another six. Is there somebody that can confirm what the city owns or? Okay. Along here. Okay, yeah, it was just these that weren't marked, so I wasn't sure because the other ones are labeled private. Well, yeah, it's only, it's 164 feet to the parking lot. So it's, yeah, it's less than a tenth of a mile and then the spaces are spread throughout this one lot.
However, that is our most towed parking lot, other than the, other than the one up at the strip mall.
Is it?
Yeah.
I thought they were very well signed. I don't know if people are breaking in the wrong spots.
Up, that town and country real estate just toes everything in sight.
Right, yeah, there were various, there were various signs that were, that said towing at owner's expense. So all the city spaces, they have wheel stops that actually have a plate on them in addition to the sign that's up on a stand.
We've got Kaiser right across the street.
Right, so then the Kaiser is over here also less than a tenth of a mile walk. There is.
Do you know how many parking spaces Kaiser holds?
It was over 250. So it's the, all the upper levels excluding the first.
Okay.
I think it's important, too, to note as a part of the parking arrangement, I have a very good relationship with my neighbor, Kearns Group.
Mike, Mike, Mike. Oh, sorry.
Right. As an addition to the parking, I'm in discussions with my neighbor, De Kearns Group, my adjoining neighbor behind me, regarding these spaces. We talked about this briefly last time, but it's a very interesting situation that was just noted earlier. The drive aisle to these parking spaces is owned completely by my property. So these spaces here, I could, I, there we go, or at least charge for the right to come across the property.
Oh, my gosh.
But no, this is obviously, it's been a situation on this lot where it's been a free-for-all of parking in here for quite some time. My neighbors are amenable and we're working on developing an agreement where we share the parking, where I basically give them an easement to come across the property, we share the parking, and as a part of the discussions that we've had, it includes a stipulation where nights and weekends, the parking is 100% used by my building. So we've done everything that we really can on our site. It's just we can't execute that agreement until we know that the project is going to move forward. But you can see from the site plan that we've submitted, we've detailed places on there where we've come to agreement to tie into a storm sewer that exists right out here in the, basically in an easement, in an easement that's been granted to the city already. So we've been in talks with them and we've also worked, one additional thing that you can see from the site plan that we originally talked about is that we've also moved our dumpsters in the final submission through working with our adjoining neighbor. They had asked that we take our dumpsters and actually move them back to the rear part right here where they don't have any windows on the side of their building. So that's something that we've taken into consideration. This was the original that we had submitted, but our final follow-up submission is going to show these all the way back here, so. You're going to come out the back, so all trash that comes out of the building will be right here and you'll notice that we're going to put them, you'll notice in the final submission in a couple of weeks that they'll actually sit right here. So basically at bottom of the stairs, the dumpster will be there. You would come down, the trash truck will come down the drive aisle here and these will be on rollers. So these will be behind an enclosure and will be, the drivers actually come out of their vehicle, take them out, slide them up, put them on the forks and then flip them. So they, the driver actually does not need access all the way back here. They'll probably stop right here and work from there.
Something that I was, whoops, something I was concerned with when I was reading some of the reports were the work that needed to be done on Park in front as far as turning lanes and stuff like that? What's involved in all that?
If you're referring to the bump out on Park Avenue and Maple.
Yeah.
That's actually included in the transportation plan or Paul Stoddard's comments. So we've transmitted those comments to the applicant and they can consider that for the revised submission.
Can I ask a question about those two requests that you have on the easements? Can you walk me through those again? Not easements, but I think it's a landscape buffer and something else.
The waivers?
The waivers, I'm sorry.
Yes. So we're requesting perimeter parking lot landscaping waivers. So per the code, we're required to provide it adjacent to public street, which is along Park, and then also adjacent to, adjacent properties, also along adjacent properties. And so because our drive aisle, again, abuts with the existing parking lot and they utilize the drive aisle, then we can't provide landscaping along here.
And the code is 10 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the same along the rear. So the parking lot extends to the rear.
So the parking lot extends to the rear, they have a parking space back here, and so we couldn't provide the landscape buffer in the rear as well.
And you're requesting four feet, a four-foot strip?
That is along Park Avenue. So Park Avenue, we're providing four-and-a-half feet adjacent to this parking space that we're providing versus the, in lieu of the 10 feet that's required.
All right. Thank you.
Can I ask another question? Where was it finally thought of to put the equipment when you're renovating?
So in answer to your question, we're working with our neighbor to basically use this area in the back of the parking spots as a staging area.
Staging area.
And then utilize these first four to five spots up here for parking in the interim.
And do you have times for deliveries to the building, et cetera?
I have not set. At this point, I haven't set specific delivery times, but typically deliveries will come generally till noon, and then they stop at that point.
My other question?
Microphone.
My question is just.
I have a dream of someday Park Avenue having better streetscape and sidewalks, and I just want to make sure that, it sounds like going to, what, a five-foot, six-foot, whatever that, I just want to build something that then 10 years from now, we're like, eh, dang, that building is preventing us from doing some nicer sidewalks along there. So I don't know if people have thought about that, but it sounds like you're at least making it as good or better than what's there now, but I also want to think about down the road.
From my understanding of what's been requested, as a part of the comments which came from planning staff, essentially what they're hoping to do is, at some point, take the existing curb line. So what we're going to do is we're going to extend what's currently a four-foot sidewalk two feet further onto the property to get a six-foot width. I think the ultimate goal of the city is to essentially expand out, starting here at this corner, as I understand it, and then basically bump the entire, this actually would give you a pretty good picture of it. So if you were to look at this.
Yeah, because it'd be great to have that space between the sidewalk and the street.
So here's the building, and this is a preliminary sketch that was done by Walter Phillips that basically expands out this landscaping section and then continues a planter box narrowing the width of Park, and then essentially will create a couple of additional spaces on this other side of the street. So in the narrowing of the street, it's going to be able to create a landscaping strip and buffer, which will be beautiful for this entire side of the street, and will push parking to over here. So the plans, I think, are in place. Obviously, it may take some time for this to come into effect, but really, the hope is that my, I think the hope is that my project and the brick sidewalks here will start the movement to really beautify this entire side, because this will be the premier walking area, you know, through Park F.
And so we got this from planning staff, and they're going to, we're going to set up a meeting to have discussions about what can be done for the streetscape there.
So this is too small, probably, to do sort of the traditional TDM?
Yeah, it's a small.
Okay. So, okay, that's okay. So what, so I'm curious, sort of how the, 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 so maybe you could, and you don't have to do it now, because it won't be like a traditional transportation plan for this, but, so you counted the Dogwood Tavern and CVS parking, and there's Kaiser, but I'm just curious, like, what, as you're sort of thinking about it from a business standpoint, what are you thinking, like, where is the cheater parking? Is it the street by Kaiser, or is it wherever that is? Where's the, where do you think the majority of people will park?
My hope is that. I've found from previous experience that the customer, obviously, is going to, if there are spots available on my lot, they're going to park there. The spots on, excuse me, not my lot, but the adjoining lot that's owned by Kearns are going to be marked spaces. We intend to really make these short-term, 15-minute parking for really the quick-service aspect. So that's our goal for the closer spots. During the day, in my experience, I've found and I've seen quite a bit of parking across the street in the spaces that Antoinette pointed out. During the day, I haven't seen a big issue in terms of parking out here. You know, at night, with the advent of having, you know, 12 to 13 spaces on my lot, as well as, you know, close parking both at the Kaiser lot, the lot across the street, and then what I've found historically is, people will walk. They'll walk as far as the lot behind Clarion Downs to be able to come to a space like that. I mean, if you want to come to the establishment, you're going to find a way to park, and that's what I've found historically in my experience. You know, obviously, as a landowner and a developer, I felt long and hard about this, and I wanted to make sure that I felt like people were going to be able to park in my business. You wouldn't make this kind of investment if you didn't think that you were going to be able to come up with a solution that would work. I mean, it's hard to say, I can't pinpoint where every person's going to park. Obviously, if we need to, we're prepared to put signs in the business to ask people not to park in adjoining lots, if that's what we need to do. You know, we're amenable to that. That's not, that's not an issue. But we're certainly on our website, we're going to put out there where the available parking is and probably put a diagram, much like Antoinette showed us that Walter Phillips prepared, that shows the available parking lots, so that people know where they can park without it being an issue. Because clearly, as everyone here knows, no one likes to be towed. It's happened to everybody. I don't want it to happen to me, and I certainly don't want that to be the flavor of the guest experience that my people have when they come to the restaurant. So we're going to work as hard as we can, and if that requires that we get additional parking arrangements with our neighbors, including the shopping center, or maybe the folks at 207 Park, that's something that we're definitely going to be willing to explore. But right now, at this point, it's still a little premature as to where we stand in the project, because, one, it's not built, it's still eight months from opening, and I don't know what business volume's going to be. I mean, everyone crosses their fingers, and you hope it's going to be great, but, you know, I don't know what it's going to be, and that's something that kind of evolves over time.
What's your occupancy?
The occupancy level is, you know, potentially, it could be, you know, 80 seats to 100 seats if it were entirely full. You know, we've done some preliminary parking calculations at the request of John Boyle that we intend to share, you know, at the hearing in a few weeks, and, you know, it might suggest that if you really do the ratio based upon what the actual guest space is, and you take out cooking and storage and walk space, it might suggest that we need spaces somewhere in the low 20s is probably an adequate count.
There's a lot of street parking along Park and up Great Falls, Little Falls, I mean.
And then you've got the city property, too, which.
Wasn't that mentioned?
Which, you know, you can make, you know, you can make some sort of arrangement to park after hours.
After, after hours, you know. I just don't think it's a big deal.
I don't either. I mean, I understand that nobody wants their property impacted negatively by this development, but it's, you know, I may be biased. I'd like to think it's a great project. That's going to be really great for the city, and I'm going to do everything I can as a business owner to make sure that, you know, we don't negatively impact people. I want it to be successful, but I appreciate your comments.
Yeah. And another thing I really would want to say, we're very grateful that Saturday's at 207 and the medical building up above that we're allowed to have parking for Farmers Market. So I just want to say thank you.
At this point, there is only going to be one curb cut, even to access those 12 spots and then your one handicap spot. It's just one curb cut. And there was a line in one of the staff reports talking about undergrounding utilities. Has that been responded to at all? It says utilities serving the building should be undergrounded instead of running overhead and across the street. I'm not aware of where the utilities are. What's the thought on that?
The existing building is fed overhead here. That's what this wire is, and currently, the plan is proposed to maintain the existing service.
But what was this, do you know what the staff comment was?
That was the staff comment?
Yeah, they talked about undergrounding the utilities in front of the site.
From where? So all the way across Parks?
Yeah, currently, the power to my building here, as well as Walter Phillips' building, comes directly off the same location, and I think from preliminary discussions with Dominion Power, the existing power that I need is on this transformer, so the power is going to need to continue to come from here, I think. And I, you know, I would say as an applicant that the cost to underground this power could be astronomical for a project this size to come underneath the street. So I think it was in the report, it was a staff request, but not a requirement.
Beating up on us.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm also, as you can see, jumps out, I'm also trying to get, what we're looking for is the service to go underground, not transformers, et cetera, just as a new house in Belkins, services underground, building. So what we've asked the applicant to do is have a good discussion with Dominion Power to find out various ways where it could come from, if you'd like to not have a line operating, apply for more viable service as well, so. Work that for a good, you know, need plans that, by the service line, need to ground, not necessarily. It will be sound about a work down on the street anyway, there's a forgotten sidewalk, highway cuts, ability cuts, so I don't think it's a no. Not freely, not a, not a, not a.
Not the transformer.
Just so I understand, so I can research appropriately, typically what they'll do is they'll come across the street, and then they may put a pole on my site. So if I can, if I can put what's called a lift pole and then bring service to my building underground, I'd be amenable to that, but that still has power coming from that transformer in the air. And I'm not, I'm not certain that the creation of a lift pole or a new pole on my property somewhere likely to be near Walter Phillips' building or these bike, or the bike racks is really that much better in aesthetic.
Unless you can go under the street.
Well, we, I don't think, I can only speak relative to North and South Washington. We didn't need lift poles for that. It was because the transformer stays on the existing pole, and it's just running the service across, and then it, and it just goes right to the building. But those were for significantly bigger buildings, and so I don't, I think the question is, can you do that here?
I'm unaware of what the cost is going to be, but if I had to look into a crystal ball, no, to come down the pole, though, if I understand what Mr. Snyder's talking about, it's come down the pole on the other side, under the street, cross through the property and up, in my experience of moving power, that could be $25,000 to $50,000 on a project like this.
It would be absolutely to move the transformer. It would, I think you're right. But at my house, we had a wire that kept getting knocked down by my dumb neighbor's trees. It was, it was.
Quote-unquote.
$2,000.
Did you have to go under a roof?
No, it just comes from the pole, so it's at the pole, runs down the pole, then runs up our driveway, underneath the driveway, and then hits the house.
But that's on your side of the street, the pole?
Yeah. It's not on our side of the street. Our other neighbor did the same thing. They took it just across the thing. It was cheap.
One of the things.
Well, I mean, it wasn't cheap. Let me not, let me not go there. Here's the thing, though, it's, that's, what we don't know is where the varying levels of service, and I think if you're moving a transformer or you're burying a transformer, you are spending 100 grand. I don't think you have to do that.
More than happy to explore it. You know, I'm not an expert in moving power. I've had some experience in it. More than happy to explore it.
If you have to do a lift pole, I think we think that would be silly. I agree.
And oddly enough, that can be free. They'll put that lift pole in there, no problem, because that's easy for them.
That destroys the.
Right. That's, no one wants that.
That adds more problems than it takes care of along Park Avenue.
Right.
I'm back, just one thing, too.
I thought you were gone.
You know, the other question is where, this is something that needs to be looked at, is where, where would the actual electrical room be? Is that in the basement of the old building, or is that in the new space? So we'd really like to have this coordinated with, you know, the design of the mechanical and electrical systems, and so it might well go in the back corner of the new space, and for example, the adjacent building, Walter, next to this building, the Kearns Group, that's, they have power fed from the rear. And so we just need to explore it more. I just, I don't think we can just say, let's leave that line across Park Avenue. Eventually, we'd like to have those lines not there. So, and that may not be the best place, Brian, to have the electrical room in the, in the old basement, so.
I'm certainly willing to explore bringing it in the back. That could be great. The problem there is I'm going to need it from, if it doesn't exist, from one of my neighbors at the rear.
Well, they've, yeah, they've all got, they've all got power coming in right on that same edge. The next-door neighbor has power coming down the side of their building, so.
We should get a contact at Walter Phillips.
Yeah.
Grease the skids here. We've got the building on right back here, right to him.
So. The other thing, I don't know if it came up or not, but we did, we have been exploring, looking at trying to expand the sidewalks. I don't know, Keita, if you all looked at Park Avenue with trees and lights and, you know, a really attractive connector between the Farmers Market and the downtown area, which would enhance not only this site, but the whole frontage. So we had Garrison Kidd do some sketches.
Go ahead.
So it could be beautiful if you don't have wires on that side of the street.
Okay. Anyone, anything for anyone?
Just one more thing. Jim, we also looked at perhaps nighttime parking on city property, so if you want to look into that, too, that would be.
Well, I know the city has been working on evening parking throughout the week with Kaiser, and that looks like that's going to be a go. So they were very open to expanding it beyond the weekends for every day of the week in the evenings. It's very close by.
But his, his question was about our parking lot out here.
Oh, the city parking lot's available, certainly.
Okay. Just wanted to pin that one down.
Yeah, anyone who came to Tanner Hill, for example, over the weekend, that parking was available and used, or, yes, it's available and it's nearby, and you could have a very nice sidewalk going down there, too, with streetlights.
Of course, I would have had the light to Tanner Hill.
Excellent point. There's lots of parking, it's just, you know, we've done a really good job of having a lot of parking. All you have to do is look at the area photographs, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions? Anyone? Comments? No? Good.
How are you? Good, good, good. I'm recovering from the weekend, from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
Thank you.
So are we really, is that really on the doctored Monday, this is?
To the best of my knowledge, yes. The historical commission has weighed in on waiving the parking requirements.
Okay, most of the time, I don't need a microphone, but just because Ms. G is right behind me. So this is 102 West Rosemary Lane. Take it away.
Hi, I'm John Varkovich with Walter Phillips, and I represent the factories for this development. Walter Phillips.
That's incredible.
What you, what you have before you, I believe, is copies of our first submission, which we received review comments on already. Walter Phillips has been in the process of addressing some of the review comments. And, and then we were informed by Kita that you all would like to have us at the work session, so we, we welcome the opportunity to hear what you all have to say, any of your concerns, comments, suggestions, and, and I may be able to give you a very good idea of how we plan on resolving some of the comments that have already come up from the first submission review. What I'd like to do is to introduce Keith Thackeray, and just, he's, he's one of the property owners, and just to let him give you a quick background on the property and, and his interests and how this is going to proceed. Keith?
Keith Thackeray, this is my sister Sue Thackeray. Her parents bought this property, Jesse and Franklin, Jesse and Franklin, Jesse and Franklin. Thackeray bought the property in 1941, and when my mother died in 2013, the property fell to our ownership. It's split among four of their children and three grandchildren in a fairly complicated formula. The bottom line being that we do need to sell the property, and it's about two-thirds of an acre, so we are trying to subdivide the property in order to get two buildable lots out of, out of what we have. So Walter Phillips has kindly agreed to take on the engineering for this project, so I'll let John have the mic back.
So just to briefly go over the project, this property at one point in time was of two parcels, and through, there was a consolidation years back to enable the property to, to expand into its current format. At this point, what we're proposing to do is, the house will be demolished or possibly deconstructed to where it will be torn down, and the use will not be a viable use. And we're looking at subdividing the property to include one pipe stem driveway serving Lot 1A, the, the rear, the rear lot, and then the remnant lot, Lot 1B, will serve a new house type. Now, I've prepared, as, as far as a preliminary subdivision plat, basically shows the infrastructure improvements, which you would be seeing. And in this, right now, the way it stands is, we have two driveway entrances. We'll propose utilities in terms of sanitary sewer that, that will extend back into Lot 1A, and will still sewer the building. Water services provided by Fairfax Water. It's fairly, a fairly simple subdivision, in, in a small subdivision. The area, the lot is zone R1A, and the pipe stem area is, is deducted from the overall area, so we're still well above the minimum 11,250 square foot for the main section of Lot 1A. There's some flexibility built into the design, because right at this time, it's, it's not known. It's, it's assumed that the Thackeries will probably, will sell both lots at this point, and not actively develop. So this, the development will go to, to a future homeowner, future builder. The design, which I entitled the ultimate development plan, is, is illustrative to show, pretty much maxing out the impervious area, what, what can be done at the ultimate, whether or not that, that is what, what the person who finally does the grading plans is, if that's what they're going to do. But what I wanted to do is to show the worst-case scenario, that, how this lot would be impacted if someone chose to put detached garages as far back as they could, and still meet all the zoning requirements in, in both cases. So the plans that you see with the ultimate development are just illustrative. They're just to show the worst-case scenario, and they're not representative of what may actually be built. What may be actually be built will have to conform with all the zoning, zoning codes. Do you all have any, any questions, comments? There's a sidewalk that exists now. It's, it's a four-foot sidewalk. It's, it said it has about a, about a foot, right around a foot grass strip. And if you go further to the south, the, it adjoins into the sidewalk, which, which is actually against the curb, so it's a little bit of a funny transition. But when you keep looking down West Rosemary, the sidewalk section that currently exists across the property is the same as, as what's going further down the street. So it's a very small grass strip that, that exists right now.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the, the entrance into the site. You have two entrances, and I was wondering, I mean, I think it's a shame that you have those two curb cuts. Wouldn't it be, if it's possible, or if it's code-wise, if it's possible to just have one entrance going into the property, and then sort of dividing it, so one goes up and then...
I, I think it's possible. It's, it's going to be a, a matter of, of marketing. It's going to be a matter of, the shared driveway is not the ultimate preference of any, anybody who wants to buy a house. I own a shared driveway, and I wish I didn't, but it, it is possible that if, if someone would, would choose to develop these, both lots at one time, a developer would purchase this, that they could integrate a, a single driveway, and have an easement, and, and could do a lot with, with this lot, and it's, it's a fairly good-sized lot. The, it's more suited for, Lot 1B is more suited for the depth, but there's probably a lot that could be done, a lot of creative things. And there is a possibility that, that it could just end up being one driveway. As, as far as what I would recommend, though, I, I would, I would probably prefer to keep it the way it is, to have the driveway, the driveway for Lot 1B shown where it is on the high side of the lot. It makes it a lot easier for when you're grading and out and doing drainage. It doesn't pond your water. And, and the other, there's another entrance very close. It's just really more or less a car pad, and what will happen there is, those two entrances will most likely be integrated, and they'll, that entrance probably could be rebuilt if it needed to be, but this development would not, not affect the adjacent lot six. That, that could be easily worked out. We've, we've done it before in the city.
Okay. Were you, I'm sorry. So in essence, we're looking at this as a blank slate. We don't know if the future developer will want to put a detached garage or anything like that.
Correct, correct. The first...
So all, the only thing we are looking at would be the curb cuts, the possibility of that, and then the subdivision of the land.
Exactly. The infrastructure, correct.
Infrastructure, so that would be the only thing we'd be...
Right.
...dealing with until somebody comes in.
But I thought it would be important for, for the planning commission to see a possibility. And, and it's not the, it, it's not the most attractive design either, but it, what it's showing, it's a very functional design. It gives the homeowner the ability to have a detached garage. It shows how much driveway that they could have and still be within code. So it, it exemplifies the possibilities of what someone that wants to come in and build their house, what they could, what they could do with it legally under the code in Falls Church.
Right, so it's totally a guesstimate, and just...
Totally a guesstimate.
Totally a guesstimate.
Anybody? Okay. Thank you so much for coming.